Okay, we're ready? Okay, good. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you and call this meeting to order. Board of Select, Tuesday, February 6, 2018. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda, public comments.
Name is Gary Regan, Nashville Road. I just wanted, I wanted to be here tonight to at least say a little bit about myself. I'd like to be considered for the Parks and Rec Commission position. I served on that commission for seventeen years. Been very involved, highly involved with youth in this town for many years, close to forty years. They are close to my heart. I, the things I try to do for the young people in this town is to bring some integrity, remove the politics, and make sure that they get what they deserve, what they should have in this town. I was part of Bethel baseball for twenty-five years. Put many hours in every year, as people can attest to, friends might attest to. And sometimes sacrifice a lot of things at home. Tournaments on weekends. My family went off to family and I was running or managing tournaments for the, for our young people and for the nearby towns as well. So I like, I really like to be considered, highly considered for this position. I know I served on it seventeen years. Reluctantly, I stepped down for certain reasons, but I'd like to, I'd like to be reconsidered for that, that position. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thanks.
Let's see, no other public here, so correspondence, anything, any late-breaking correspondence, Dion?
Nothing.
All right. Okay, so we have two sets of minutes to approve. The first will be the regular meeting of January 16, 2018.
I'll make a motion to accept those minutes.
All right.
Second.
Yep, discussion.
Yep, we have, just a minor error there. We noted that Jan Cosgrove cited as a Democrat for Consp, which is really unaffiliated.
Oh, unaffiliated, okay. All right. All right, we'll make that correction. Thank you. Any other changes?
No.
Anything to note? Okay, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that carries. The next would be the minutes of the public hearing of January 30, 2018.
Making motion, will you approve the minutes as submitted?
Second. Okay. Any comments? You're none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That carries. First, excuse me, First Elections Report. Not a lot to cover. There's just two, two things. If you've been watching the, or watching the newspapers, you might have noticed that the governor has, Governor of the State of Connecticut has issued a, his proposal to the legislature for a revised budget, and the session actually begins tomorrow. The proposal reverses some things that had been put in the paper recently, such as sharp cutbacks on public transportation on the Connecticut rail system, as well as steep fare hikes. In the governor's proposal, there, some of those things have been removed. However, his proposal is to make the holdbacks that Bethel was subjected to, which is close to a million dollars, as it was a net of about $770,000. He wants to make that permanent in the upcoming budget. So again, he does not have the authority to oppose that, but the legislature does have to deal with the shortfall in the current year budget as well as the shortfall that's projected for the upcoming fiscal year. So I did have a meeting with one of our delegation today, one of the Bethel delegation, Representative Harding. We had an extremely productive talk, and he's conveying to the rest of our delegation that our desire is to, for the state to move to the new formula, which they, which the legislature approved last session, that would keep Bethel almost whole and find some other ways to deal with the other, the shortfalls within the state budget. And the gap is not that big. He believes that, especially this being an election year with, with, for state legislators, that they will work very hard to keep towns like Bethel whole and not impose that kind of a cut. But we will have to keep an eye on that and possibly go to Hartford and testify, and I'll keep you guys informed. Item number two, I wanted to let you know that a few weeks ago, we made a formal change, a personnel change. Brad Herring, who is the deputy comptroller, was given an additional set of responsibilities and a title to go with it. So he is now, in addition to deputy comptroller, he is the town's risk manager. And so this is really something that he's been working into for many months, for like, pretty much the last six months. And what the risk manager's responsibility, responsibilities entail is assessing, obviously, as the title says, assessing risk and proactively taking actions to mitigate risk. In other words, try to prevent accidents and elements of risk before they happen that cost us money. And one of the biggest examples is with our workers' compensation insurance. Over the past seven years, we've seen tremendous increases in workers' compensation coverage. One year, the last year that we were with Aetna Insurance, they, they tried to oppose a thirty percent increase in one year. That was an increase of hundreds of thousands of dollars. And we, we abandoned them that year, went to KERMA. But even with KERMA, we've had, we've seen increases that ranged anywhere from ten to fourteen percent per year. So starting last year, we started a proactive and very aggressive campaign to train employees, you know, in work safety procedures. And even going beyond that, assigning Mr. Herring to the position of risk manager even moves us into the area of scrutinizing risk in terms of financial risk, cybersecurity, things like that. So taking proactive steps to stop that, to stop bad things from happening before they happen. And I'm very pleased to tell you that already, just because we have been so proactive, you'll see as we go through the budget process this year that we've already earned a zero percent increase in workers' comp rates as well as property and liability rates. And those are things that have been escalating, like I said, by six figures or more for several years in a row. So it's, it's something we probably shouldn't have done a long time ago. We're, it's paying dividends already in terms of savings. And there are accounts that have actually been able to force five to eight percent decreases in their, their LAP insurance and workers' comp by aggressively handling risks. So over the next year, this is the program we're going to employ. I would also tell you that our, because of our risk management program, we've instituted a program with a, with a company who specializes in cybersecurity. This is, this is within the IT budget. What they do is they evaluate your risk to things like hacking, you know, financial fraud, things of that nature. And one of the ways that that happens most often with, with corporations, you know, public and private, is employees are tricked into opening an email that has a bad, has a hot link that goes, that then downloads a virus or a Trojan horse onto your computer system. So employees for the past six months have been subjected to random tests, where our own IT department, in conjunction with the cybersecurity consultancy, sets up a dummy server, and they, they send out spoof emails that have clues into them. You know, and employees have gone through online training to see how to spot the clues. And if they fall for the trick, the thing comes up and says, you know, "You've been hacked." You know, fortunately, this was a test, it was not a real hack. So I, I just want to tell you that the, the one that they, the most recent trick was an email that looked, it looked absolutely perfect, like it had come from a nationally-known news organization. And the headline said, "Mueller Investigation Issues Indictment for the President of the United States." And nobody fell for it, even though it was, a few people fell for it, but I didn't. So, but that, that is paying dividends as well, because we are, we have a staff. Everybody who uses email is becoming very cognizant of the tricks of the phishing attacks and the spear phishing, they call it, where they're very targeted. And towns and cities in Connecticut have lost hundreds of thousands. I think the worst hack was close to a million dollars that a city lost by spoofed email. That is what they call spear phishing. So these are, these are paying off, giving us some added risk protection and already saving us some money as we go into the next budget season. So I thought I'd bring you guys up to date on that. So any, any other, any other comments?
Just, just a couple of questions, Matt. That $770,000, this is ECS funding primarily we're talking about.
Yeah, there's a little $116,000 and some other stuff, but mostly ECS.
The question is, we're coming up on the budget season. How do we address that? Do we just take it out and just assume it's not going to be there? Hopefully, we'll work on a plus side.
We'll have to talk about that.
Yeah.
It's not a decision we have to make yet.
Yeah, I know.
And fortunately, this is what they call a short session. So if the, if the legislature shows the courage and the bipartisan cooperation, that they finally mustered last fall to get through the last budget season, we could have an answer in time to be able to adjust a budget before we go to the town meeting.
Yeah.
But we really, we really don't.
It's a little concerning for, you know, all of us as we're approaching this, like you say. Hey, congratulations about Brad Herring taking on this risk thing. He's not involved in pension and insurance program about as investment risk, is he?
No, that's investment risk, that's.
That's pension, insurance. Yeah, okay. Okay, thank you. That's, that's very good.
Great. Anything else?
No.
Okay. All right, going out to new business. Item number one, we had, actually, item numbers one and two are resolutions that we just passed last night at the Public Utilities Commission meeting. These will have to go to the Board of Finance and then go on to a special town meeting for final approval, consideration of approval. I do want to recommend, or just want to remind everybody, and especially for the, for the record, that neither one of these are, have any, have any impact on the town budget or taxpayer funds at all. These are to approve leases, or low-interest loans for the PUC that are paid from ratepayer funds, not from tax dollars. So I'm going to put the first one on the, put a motion on the floor to approve, subject to Board of Finance approval, the Briar Cliff Pump Station as recommended by the Public Utilities Commission. So I'll make a motion that we approve the Briar Cliff Pump Station and Water Main Extension Project at an estimated cost of $862,637, which includes $814,892 for construction, five percent for contingency, and $7,000 for legal fees.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? You're none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And just under discussion, I want to back up, but do we want to make, make a comment that this is under a consent order to do this work?
Okay, yes.
I mean, I mean, it's, it has to be done.
I'll amend, I'll amend my motion to include, in response to the State, State of Connecticut Department of Public Health Consent Order. There is a, there is a document number which will, I'll look up and add to that. I don't have it handy, but we'll add that to it.
Marty has.
You know, I know you said, "Subject to approval, Board of Finance," but you have to send it to the Board of Finance.
Yeah, right.
So you're going to do another motion, or, because you didn't say that. You just said, "Subject to approval."
I'll amend my motion to say, to send to the Board of Finance and subject to their approval.
And are you also going to set a town meeting now?
Yeah, that's the third motion.
Okay.
Yeah. So thank you. Thank you for the.
And then second.
Okay. All right, so those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, second one, I'll make a motion to send to the Board of Finance for their approval the Water Main Replacement Project as recommended by the Public Utilities Commission and in accordance with the Department of Public Health Consent Order. Water Main Replacement Project with an estimated cost of $977,830, which includes $924,600 for construction, five percent contingency, and $7,000 for legal fees.
Second.
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And last, I'm going to make a motion to establish a special town meeting to, for consideration of the two previous motions, subject to Board of Finance approval. And I'm going to recommend in this motion that we conduct a special town meeting on Tuesday, February 20th, at six.
Twenty-seven. Or was it 20th? I'm sorry, you're right, you're right.
No, no, that's it. No, actually, you're right, it's 27th. Twenty-seventh. Hi, Mike. Twenty-seventh, thank you, thank you for catching it. Twenty-seventh, at 6:30 PM here in Meeting Room A at the Clifford J. Hergin Municipal Center. And that will be, that'll give us a half an hour before the, we have budget. I think that's the night that the Board of Select presents this budget to the Board of Finance.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, so I'll have to do all my homework beforehand. Okay, so the motion is Tuesday, the 27th, at 6:30 in Meeting Room A. And did you, who seconded that?
Second.
Okay, Rich seconded. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Thank you very much, that carries. Okay. Item number three, consideration of appointment to vacancy in the Parks and Recreation Commission. Paul?
Yes, I'd like to make a recommendation that we appoint Gary Regan. We heard all about Gary, and you know, I totally endorse what Gary has done for the town. This is expertise, this is experience, and this is what we need. And Gary's always been in favor of the town, so, and the children too. So that's my motion.
Second motion. And I agree with Gary, we spend a lot of time donating to the town and a lot of hours away from our families, and you know, I commend you for that. And you know, a lot of good people do that, so thank you.
Thank you.
And I concur with both sentiments. So we've motioned on the floor, seconded, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So don't forget, we'll, we'll remember to tell Lisa that we approved, so don't forget to go get sworn in tomorrow, or whenever, before the next meeting, certainly. All right, thank you very much, and thanks for coming tonight, appreciate that. Item number four, I'm going to ask that we table, because I had failed to complete all the paperwork on this. That's consideration of the Chief of Police Employment Contract, so I'll just entertain a motion to table.
Second.
Okay. Well, I made the motion, he seconded it. Those in favor?
Aye. Can we combine the executive sessions, or do you have to do them individually?
No, we can, we can do those at the end, if that's all right with you guys. Because we've got two other items for executive session. Mr. Boyle is here. Unless there's any objection, I thought that we would go, go to the, go to old business number three, consideration of business tax incentive, the deferral of the assessment increases. Is that all right with you guys?
Aye.
Okay. All right, so consideration of the business incentive is on the floor. I'm going to start off by making a motion that we approve the amended business incentive, which was passed recently by the, by the Economic Development Commission, which lowers the threshold from $100,000 to $50,000, I believe.
That's correct.
So that's the, so that, that, what date was that, that was?
That was third Wednesday of January.
Okay. All right.
Where that date was?
Yeah, third Wednesday, it would have been January, what's it, 17th.
There you go.
Okay, so the, the comments from the public hearing were largely very positive. There were, there were a couple of objections to that. The, the one thing that I wanted to point out, though, is that I'm not, not 100% sure that, that everybody understood this, but the, two, two comments. The proposed ordinance does not cost the town money. There's no money being put out, like seed money being, being paid to anyone to come to the town with Bethel. It is a deferral of a future assessment. Number two, the, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the deferral only applies to the real estate, correct? Like to the physical improvements to the?
To, to, to the improvements that will end up being on the tax roll as a result of those.
Okay. So if I understand this correctly, if you, let's say, expanded a building and there was a cost to doing that, that would be eligible. But if you then, then put additional equipment, say you put a manufacturing machine.
That's not.
That's not, that's ineligible. So no matter what happens, it's likely that the taxpayers will see an increase in tax.
It's, it's a, I could make the public meeting, I was on vacation, but it's actually a revenue producer for the town.
Yes, right.
It's straight, it doesn't, it's an encouragement for someone to further develop the property, to increase the tax rolls on behalf of the town, and in essence, give the incentive in the short term with the return of long-term revenue production that may not otherwise have happened.
Okay. And for the record, I just want to state that Mike Boyle is Chairman of the Economic Development Commission. Thank you for being here tonight.
Let me just ask one question, and I think I know the answer. But let's just use an example of a lot up in the industrial park, empty. Random corporation comes in there, say, with 120 employees. How do we handle that one? Is this just the real estate?
It's just the real estate. It's the structure that is being put on to that lot, to improve that lot.
Yeah, but everything inside, that's all subject.
No, not, not the, like in other words, if they buy desks and chairs and computers and so forth, that's not covered under this. It's the actual.
Correct, okay. That's, okay, I understood that.
Right. I just wanted to correct the record. The official title is, "This deferral of assessment increases attributable to construction or improvements."
Can I just, a couple of things. The first is that their change with the numbers, starting with $50,000, was in the public notice.
Yeah.
It was there already. What was not there was an error that was discovered after the fact, and that, that was, so you might want to mention this in your motion too, that under 98.29D2 is amended to refer to Section 98-27 Subsection A. That is the one where inadvertently I used the letters from the Danbury Ordinance.
Oh.
And we couldn't get, I didn't discover that until after the public hearing notice. I, I announced it at the meeting.
Yes, I remember you did that.
So that, you might want to make mention of that.
Okay.
As amended for that section.
Okay. Ninety-eight.
And the handout that we have here, that we got here, doesn't have that. So just be aware of that, it's not in here. It's got the old stuff.
So D2 is, is to be stricken?
Yeah, and it should read, that it should refer to Section 98-27 Subsection A.
Right. So that should be removed?
That's right.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, B1 is wrong.
Okay. All right, well, we'll include that as amended. Okay, great. Okay, Rich, did you have questions?
No, I, I think it's a great idea. It's going to be an opportunity for the town to bring in, hopefully, new businesses and increase their tax rolls in the future. You know, if we get new business come in, you know, it's people in town buying gas, buying food, and it's a win-win situation, I believe. Should have done it a long time ago.
It puts us on the radar for people looking for places to be too, so.
And you know, needless to say, I've been in favor of this for the last 12 years, so, great, I'm a clip. Glad to hear that.
Okay, well, we have a motion on the floor to approve, and I think this requires 31 days before it becomes effective, is that correct, Marty?
No, it's, it's, yeah, but it's, it's after it's published.
Yeah.
A synopsis. We don't have to publish the whole thing again.
Yeah.
Well, in 10 days, we've got to publish a synopsis, and then, then it's effective 30 days after that.
Okay. So do you have to give Dion legal language for that synopsis?
Yeah, we'll, we'll work on it together.
Okay, very good. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to approve. Those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
That carries. And I want to thank the EDC and Janice, all the members of the EDC and Mike, for your work on this, because you've been working on this for a year, as I recall.
That's correct.
Actually, probably, we've been talking about it for several years. So I greatly appreciate the, the work. You know, you get the credit for all the work that you put into this, so. And to be honest, I wasn't a fan at the very beginning, but I have become a believer, so. Thank you for everything you put into it, we really appreciate it. Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Julie, you're only here for five minutes, but it was a good five minutes.
Years' work in five minutes.
Yeah. All right. Before we get into the executive session items, under old business item number two, we have on the agenda consideration of a generator request for the Bethel Police Department. This is for the new construction, and I'm going to dig out the paperwork. So we have a, we have a recommendation that was voted on by the Energy Conservation Committee to, even though the police station is under construction, and was approved by the, by the Building Committee, which includes representatives of the Police Department, as well as, under, with the approval of the Police Commission, I believe, the project was approved for what's known as a Tier III generator. The Energy Commission, the Energy Committee has recommended that we stop that order, which is in process, and replace that with a Tier IV generator. I did invite a few people to come tonight, and I don't believe they, they were able to make it. But the advantage is, as I understand it, of the Tier IV is that it, it allows us to sell power back into the grid and, as well as to start the machine without there being a need to do so due to an emergency. So the, the town would actually get some revenue back from selling power back into the grid when the, when the thing is running. The downside is that it is much more costly than the Tier III, and at this stage of the construction would require some significant change orders. So you can see in the documentation I provided that if we were to change this order midstream, we would stand to realize a total of $73,000 in revenue back from the Tier IV generator from the date that the police station opened through May 31, 2022. However, the Downs Construction Company produced an estimate, which you have in your hands, that it would cost $470,000 to switch to the more expensive Tier IV, and including a penalty for canceling the order, and then technical modifications that we need to go in for the switchgear and to, to install the larger Tier IV generator. When we take into account that the project cost has $85,000 already programmed in for the Tier III, then that cost to switch would be $385,000. So the question before you, gentlemen, is, do we want to act on this recommendation from the Energy Commission?
Rich, you're, you're on the committee.
Yeah, well, you know, this has been going back and forth with the Police Station Committee for quite some time, and they originally voted to just go ahead with the, because they're over budget on the project, and you know, they didn't have the extra money to put that Tier IV in. So the Energy Commission was looking for the town to come back and offset the cost. Well, I think if the town has to come back and offset the cost, I'd like to complete the building with the, the extra money that they're going to require. A generator is the generator. When you lose power, the Tier III generator will run and provide power for the police station. The police station, I don't, in my personal opinion, do not believe we should be selling back electricity to the power company in that particular building. I mean, that's an emergency center, and you know, if the power company wants us to turn on the generator to run power to help them out, we're adding hours to the generator in, in sense could have more wear and tear on the machine and in the long run, costs us more money for maintenance to keep that machine up and running. So I am not in favor of spending the extra money for the Tier IV generator.
Okay. Well, yeah, you know, I, I could sort of an ROI on this whole thing, and right now, we have to say, you know, for us to come up with $385,000, given the economy, given this coming budget season, given what's happening up in the state, it's a lot of money just to push forward. And I agree with Rich, we shouldn't be in the energy production business, you know. There's another thing that, there's a couple of things that bothered me about this whole thing. And let me just cite my objections, okay? If I, if I use that. If I, if I use that $73,000 of revenue per year, and this is.
Oh, that's not per year, that's over four years, or three years. That's total.
Oh.
Look over the far right-hand side, and you'll see that it ramps up and it becomes about 20, only 27, a little over 27,000 per year.
Well, the ROI on that is just outside that.
Yeah.
It really is, it's probably like 20 years, if not more than. So, you know, there's no point in discussing this thing. The other issue is, I know Downs Construction gave us this estimate of something like this. If I, if we were to really consider it, we really should go to a couple of companies, and we just don't have the time to do it and to delay a project. So I'm a fan of those two.
Okay. I agree with both of your comments, and the other thing that occurred to me is that the Energy Committee is looking at the feasibility of a microgrid up there with the possibility of fuel cells. Fuel cell costs come down, it's possible that the entire school campus, including the police station and Reynolds Ridge, could be covered by a microgrid, which would negate a Tier, having a Tier IV handling. So.
I agree.
All right, so we've done, you know, the recommendation was for us to take action, we will decline to do so. No vote is needed on that, it's on the, on the record, so.
Yeah.
All right, so we will first find with the committee and let them know about that.
And also with the Building Committee to move forward that they're.
Yes. Yep.
So it's not holding that up anymore.
Right. Okay.
I'm sorry, what is that?
To notify the Building Committee to proceed with their Tier III.
Okay. Sorry, just, I've been here.
No, I'm sorry, I was facing.
So we're going to go into executive session now for those remaining two items. Thanks, thanks, Gary.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, wait, but wait till, wait till we make a motion, but I have a question for you. Did you pass out copies of the YMCA?
No, I had to pass out.
Okay. Yeah, why don't you go ahead and do that? And do you have the YMCA contract, too, that I sent that to you?
Yes, it's, that is already in here.
Okay, okay. I suppose I should.
I was going to say, I don't, I didn't make a copy for you, because I gave you the originals.
Oh, here we go, yeah.
You know what, I think that your originals are on your desk. I gave you all the originals, but I didn't make copies of.
Oh, this is the other one.
Do you have one? Here you go. I just don't, you'll have to share the map.
Okay, yeah, I got it. Okay, so I'll make a motion that we enter executive session at 7:38, inviting in town council, Martin Lawler.
Second.
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, yeah, Dan, you can shut down, and you're off the hook. I will give.